Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If it stands, Commissioner Kodish, can you lead us with an invocation and pledge of allegiance, please?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our beautiful county. We come together in gratitude for the abundance we had and ask for your guidance in fighting hunger within our community. May we be inspired to share our resources, lend a helping hand, and uplift those in need. Grant us compassion and strength to do work together so that no one goes to bed hungry. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to apply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from September 5th.
Commissioner Duhon.
Second. Both in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed and motion carries. Treasurers report. Treasurer Griffin.
Good morning. Following payments were reported to the treasurer's office for the period. Accounts payable for $719,117.18 payroll was $369,096.61. Other accounts that had payments from them would include non-111 with eight checks and four EFTs totaling $31,819.78. LEPC had a check for $383.82. CDBG, four checks totaling $158,211.80. And finally, Liquid Fuels had a check for $21,785 even.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to make? So, second. Both in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the product bill to pay.
Treasurers report for the period starting 9/4 and ending 9/17, 2024. General account started with $1,774,275.77. Total debits for the period were $841,933.19. And we ended the period with $1,513,407.55. And finally, Capital Reserve had an ending balance of $15,325,271.92.
Thank you, Danny. So, second. Both in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Thank you. Please advance, Commissioner Wise.
I have not disappointed. Kathy has my list.
And I will send the list also to Kathy. I forgot if I should get my list with the meeting. Commissioner Kodish.
I've turned in my list to Chief Clerk. It's all set there. I'd also like to welcome Lilly Rivera and Morgan Bridge from MCDU today. Thank you for filming for us.
Okay, thank you. Public comment? Is there any public comment? I don't see here anything, so we'll just move on to do business. Commissioner Kodish, you have an update for the upcoming election?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple reminders. The voter registration deadline is October 21st at 5:00 p.m. The office will be open until 5:00 that day. So again, October 21st for voter registration. If you want a mail-in ballot, the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot is October 28th, again, at 5:00 p.m. To date, we've received 3,127 applications for mail-in ballots. So that is a very high number for us. I think we're just under 2,000 in the 2020 election. So we're at 3127 with more coming in daily. So that's a very popular option that people have. And regarding mail-in ballots, we've gotten some calls about people wondering where their ballot is. We just got approval Tuesday to start the process of getting them printed and prepared for mailing because there's several lawsuits in the Commonwealth. They were selling who was on the ballot and who wasn't. And we just got that approval. So probably gonna be about the first week of October until the ballots go out. So if you know anyone that's applied for one, they're looking for it, wondering where it is, first week of October while the printing process is completed and all the ballots stuffed in envelopes and get the process rolling. So thank you.
Okay. And we encourage anybody with any questions relating to the election or the ballots or really anything relating to the deadlines to call the Office of Elections or call the Commissioners and we will get that information back to you. Okay, there is a proclamation for Hunger Action Month. I'd like to read the proclamation. This is for 2024 Hunger Action Month proclamation. Whereas hunger and food insecurity are issues of vital concern in Pennsylvania where, according to Feeding America, over 1.5 million individuals, that's one in eight Pennsylvanians and one in every six children, experience food insecurity. In Mifflin County, one in seven neighbors and one in five children are food insecure. And whereas adequate nutritious food has become more expensive and out of reach for many of our neighbors with food costs increasing more than 27%, leading to a record demand for charitable food. And whereas food insecurity, the condition of limited or uncertain access to adequate food, is associated with numerous adverse social health outcomes and is a critical public health issue. And whereas Mifflin County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every corner of our communities and to provide additional resources to those in need. And whereas Mifflin County is committed to working with the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank to educate people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas Central Pennsylvania Food Bank distributed over 68.5 million pounds of food in fiscal year 2024 to Pennsylvanians experiencing food insecurity. In Mifflin County alone, over 870,000 pounds of food were distributed. And whereas public and private entities, including policymakers, business leaders, community activists, farmers, concerned citizens, and hunger relief organizations must collectively work to address food insecurity within the Commonwealth. And whereas the month of September has been designated nationwide as Hunger Action Month to raise awareness of the issue of hunger and mobilize our legislature and the public to help end hunger in America. Therefore, be it now, we, the Commissioners, do hereby recognize September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in Mifflin County, Pennsylvania, and we call this observance to the attention of our citizens. This is proclaimed the 19th day of September 2024, Commissioners Postal, Kodish, and Wise.
Commissioner Duhon. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? That motion carries. And I would like to address the meeting.
Good morning. My name is Maria DiSavella from the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. Thank you so much for this recognition, Commissioners Kodish, Commissioner Postal, and Commissioner Wise. We really appreciate the recognition and the proclamation. As you heard, one in seven neighbors is food insecure in Mifflin County and the need is higher than ever to the tune of 27%. We could not do this work, the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank could not do this work without the lead agency, Mifflin County Human Services, with, under the leadership of Melissa Stewart and support from Robin White. Their direction, their support of all the agencies is incredible and this work could not happen. So I would also like to recognize and thank Melissa and her team.
Thank you. Thank you. And we definitely, without the collaboration with the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, it really helps streamline the process and allow for food at a reduced cost, which allows us to get more fitted to more families. So it really speaks to the collaboration that is necessary, especially in rural communities, but really everywhere, in order to meet the needs.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No, we've said, well, in that proclamation that 870,000 pounds of food were distributed. That to me is a big, big number. Do you have any idea how many families or how do we keep track of that, I guess?
And in Mifflin County, there is a system to keep track of all the families to tune of, well, do you remember how many?
I don't.
Doesn't need to be. I'm just wondering, 100, 200, 500?
I would say it's at least 600 families a month through all the food pantries. I know the military share, which they don't usually, they have a hard time putting information in our system, but they see, they're right up around 250 veteran families that receive food boxes every month through the military share program. And we realize that regardless of how many food pantries we have in the local area, Mifflin County was still considered food insecure. So we started exploring why we were still food insecure when we had so many food pantries and we realized that transportation was an issue for many of the outlying areas. So we started a Fresh Express in McFay Town, which is a food distribution through Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, and that's once a month. Their numbers are up to right around 125 families a month. And we are now meeting with Milroy, who they are going to start a Fresh Express out that way to see, and they're expecting their numbers to be right around. They're gonna start with like 80 boxes and we expect it to grow out that way as well. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that the food gets to where it needs to be.
Are the locations available for people to, they know where to pick out?
So we do a food calendar that's posted. I send it out to, I don't know, a lot of agencies and it's also posted on the county website every month. And it has where all the food distributions are, free meals, and that gets updated monthly.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. We would like a photo.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll continue with next order of business is a change order for the Mifflin County Library. This is adding demo and framing for the east wing. That's the wing that if you enter the library, it's on the left. This is in addition to the base project, which we have approved. This change order is an increase of $58,000. It seems logical and legitimate to do this work now instead of waiting for a future phase. And discussion on change order. If not, is there a motion to move?
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That change order is approved. So change order related to that, and this is related to the mechanical and electrical work associated with the east wing, again, into the library, this is on the left. This increase is $47,716.68. Both of these change orders, they will complete the east wing renovations. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And change order is approved.
First contrary or another, just to, I don't know, that east wing, one of the main reasons for completing that now is, as I said, it makes a lot of sense to complete the infrastructure needed. But the main, another main factor is if we would delay this until a possible future phase two, the library would have to be closed for an extended period of time again. This way, the library will be able to reopen when this work is completed. And it'll reopen in December and we proceed to a future phase. Part of the library will be partitioned off and the main library will be able to stay open. So that's big. Otherwise, they would be forced to close down for a few months again in future times if this prevents that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we're in the recess, the public meeting, and we're going to convene a meeting to, the CDBG meeting, I guess, right? Yes. Okay. So on the agenda, Tyler and Carol?
Carol, yes.
Okay, who is going to?
We're gonna let Carol do the first half and then I'll play queen.
Can you say your last name to the record?
Yes, my name is Hi, Carol Carney Hi. I'm a project coordinator at CDCOG focused on Mifflin County grants. So we are collecting information about everyone who's attending this public hearing. If anyone was not able to sign our sheet, I have it here to pass it around. So the purpose of this public hearing is to obtain comments on Mifflin County's proposed use of a total allocation of $781,884 of community development block grant for CDBG funding. On or about November 1st, 2024, Mifflin County and Mifflin County on behalf of Arma Township, Brown Township, Dairy Township, Grandville Township, and Lewistown Borough plans to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for federal fiscal year 2024 CDBG funds. Mifflin County Commissioners will consider approval of the CDBG application later during the regular public meetings this morning. Based on the amount of funds to be received, Mifflin County, along with Arma Township, Brown Township, Dairy Township, Grandville Township, and Lewistown Borough propose to allocate CDBG funds as follows. Mifflin County selected the Wayne Township Water Meter Replacement Project, which will include installation of new meter pits in the public right-of-way. Eighty-four water meters will be replaced with walk-by water meter, water reading system equipment for more efficient water meter reading. If water needs to be cut, the shut-off will be easier to access and the higher than normal reading can alert Wayne Township Water Authority of a problem for equipment. The property owner will then be responsible for leak repairs and the water loss. The overall goal for the Water Authority is to keep rates as low as possible for all customers. The total 2024 CDBG budget for the Wayne Township Water Meter Replacement Project is $222,473. The project also was selected for funding in the federal fiscal year 2023 and has $103,403 in federal funding pending. Wayne Township also has committed $5,000 in local funds. Are there any comments or questions about this project?
Maybe you said, Carol, when would this start then?
The project?
If it were, yeah, totally approved by everybody?
So the funding would likely, 2024 funding would likely not be available until next summer, but the work could begin?
So we'll get into development, I'd say, next summer, and we'd probably be looking at 2026 for implementation. Yep?
Questions? Any other questions? Okay. I mean, I know we've, um, Arma Township has selected the Barefoot Road Reconstruction Project, which will include replacement of a small bridge and replacement of a large culvert pipe and pulverization, grating, and paving of Barefoot Road. Data collected through a community survey of Barefoot Road residents in July 2024 show that the primary benefits of the project are more than 51% low to moderate income families. Arma Township plans to do the bridge and culvert work, but will request bids for paving components. The total 2024 CDBG budget for this project is $93,545. Are there any questions or comments about the Arma Township Barefoot Road Reconstruction Project?
Hi, Carol, I have a question.
Sure.
When you're reading the total, you're including the administration dollars as well?
I am.
Okay.
I am, yes. That includes the project budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, Karen, any questions or comments? Brown Township selected the Reevesville Park Improvements Project, which will include grating, site prep, and construction of an accessible 16 by 24-foot picnic pavilion along Honey Creek Road between the existing tennis courts and ball field. Although the park is located in a floodplain, the site of the proposed pavilion is not within the regulated floodway. The primary beneficiaries of the project are the residents of Reevesville, which is an LMI area. The total 2024 CDBG budget, including project and administrative costs, is $94,564. Are there any questions or comments about the Reevesville Park Improvement Project? Karen, I move on. Dairy Township selected two projects for fiscal, federal fiscal year 2024. Most of the streets within Yeager Town have not been reconstructed for at least 20 to 25 years, and Dairy Township plans to address the problem in the entire service area. The project was selected for funding in the federal fiscal year 2022 and 2023 for a total of $213,688 in CDBG funding. Reconstruction efforts for Clover Avenue and the alleys are complete. The 2024 project, Yeager Town Area Road Reconstruction Phase One, will reconstruct the entire lengths of First, Second, and Third Streets from Main Street to Greenwood Avenue and Fourth Street from North Main Street to North Block Avenue. These streets are all township roads. First Street is township of 425, Second Street township 427, Third Street township 416, and Fourth Street township 429. The second project that's selected by Dairy Township is Mifflin County Housing Authority Scattered Site Roof Replacements. The Mifflin County Housing Authority identified four sites in Dairy Township to receive new roofs to increase energy efficiency. Project efforts will benefit household residents of an area with 51% or greater low to moderate income persons. The total 2024 CDBG budget for Dairy Township projects, including administrative costs, is $128,160. Are there any questions or comments about the Dairy Township projects?
So the housing authority projects have residents in those places?
Yes, yes, they do.
But it isn't the eligibility of the residents, it's the eligibility of the area?
Yeah, so you are correct, Commissioner. It's based, so in order for the residents to reside in this housing, they have to be income qualified, so that's how the project is called. Am I correct? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Moving on. Grandville Township selected a housing rehabilitation project. Homeowners who are income eligible will be assisted with a combination of grant, forgivable loan to help correct deficiencies found through inspection of their homes. Potential deficiencies that may be corrected include electrical upgrades, roof, furnace, or other HVAC upgrades, windows, and doors. Lead-based paint hazards, radon, and asbestos, as identified in the risk assessment, will be abated. No housing rehabilitation will occur in a floodway. All work will be completed in accordance with the most current DCED Housing Rehab Guide Book. Hybrid state prevailing wages will be used on all projects over $25,000. It is anticipated that approximately two homes can be completed. The total 2024 CDBG budget is $101,167. Questions or comments about the Grandville Township project? We'll move on. Lewistown Borough selected a rec park improvements project. Lewistown Borough, County seat of Mifflin County, had a population of 8,579, according to the 2020 census, and it has an average LMI percentage of 53.3. Lewistown Borough's rec park provides Lewistown residents with a public swimming pool, baseball and football fields, a one-mile walking, running path, a playground, picnic pavilions, and access to Fish Creek for fishing. Although DCED has confirmed with us that improvements involving playground equipment, fencing, or lighting activities are ineligible for CDBG funding due to the activities located in the floodway. Paving efforts for Cherry Street leading into the park and the parking lot would be compliant under 24 CFR Part 55.8A1 to B if it is a minor improvement and utilizes pervious surfacing. Natural and beneficial functions of the floodplain must be followed as required by local state federal law. So the effort, the original proposed activity did include fencing around the tennis courts, lighting, and accessible playground equipment, but through discussions with DCED, we have focused on improving Cherry Street leading into the park and then redoing the parking lot so that it's a pervious surface. They've not, they've not decided what exactly they'll be doing there. The total 2024 CDBG budget for this project, including administration costs, is $142,975. Are there any questions or comments regarding the Lewistown Borough project?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I have a question here. All these projects from, uh, County Council and stuff, were they all bidding projects with prevailing wage?
Yeah, probably for the most part, the answer to that is yes. If we're able to utilize municipal staff to complete the work, that is an option and that does get us around having to beat prevailing wage, but more often than not, that's probably the case, yeah.
So Arma Township is using, I think you've mentioned some of their staff?
They would like to use their staff for the replacement of the small bridge and the culvert, but they would bid the road over the location of paving.
And for all of these, does the town, do the municipalities now, they've proved this, obviously?
Yes.
Do they have to pass resolutions or have they done that already?
They have, they have certified the project.
Yeah, so they have taken action in a meeting, but as far as the resolution goes, which is the next talking point that the county's dealing with, that has to pass the resolution. They're all approved by the municipality.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
I know we have actions. Go on, Commissioner.
Yeah, one other question. Now, the townships and boroughs that are gonna, I guess, help out with projects, they, meaning for roads especially, because they use their liquid fuels for that.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any more discussions? Okay, before us then is a resolution 45 of 2024, which would allow us to submit these projects, uh, to submit these applications up for the 2024 CDBG program. Any other discussions? If not, is there a motion to move through? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. We have other actions here related to maybe this or the CDBG program. We have maybe four or five other things in front of us.
We'll try and be concise. Okay, worry about it. Do you want me to do the fair housing? Okay. So one of the, with this being HUD funding, there's some of the strings that come with CDBG money is promoting fair housing education. So there's a number of things that the county needs to do on an annual basis to meet that requirement. One of those is passing the annual fair housing resolution. It gets submitted with your CDBG application. So in the resolution, it provides some discussion as far as the protected classes, as far as housing rights with the Civil Rights Act of, since '64 or '68, it specifies on the resolution. And then the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act as well, there's some additional protected classes. And then what housing discrimination looks like, those sorts of things. So the resolution affirms the board's support of promoting fair housing education and doing the things that CDCOG does on the board's behalf to continue to meet those requirements.
Okay, is there a motion to approve number 46, Resolution 46 of 2024?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 47 is?
Yeah. So another, just kind of the strings that comes with CDBG money is that the county needs to be providing continuous evaluation of its facilities, administrative practices, et cetera, as far as accessibility is concerned. That's something that with all of our CDBG projects, we have to take into account that when we complete the project, we're not excluding segments of the population from the benefits of the project. So during our public hearing process, we have opportunities for comment as far as providing or getting input from the public as far as are there any, any facilities or practices which are excluding resident participation. So the county has to have a point of contact as far as 504 is concerned. It's, Lonnie has listed on the resolution. The county has had to pass the resolution on file, but it made reference that the county did an evaluation. did an evaluation in twenty fourteen, and with five oh four, it's really supposed to be an ongoing, continuous evaluation. So we're just kind of tweaking that language a little bit for the county.
Okay, so we're appointing Lonnie Riff as Director of Maintenance as the compliance officer, and we're also adopting agreements procedure.
Yeah.
And that's what resolution forty-seven of twenty twenty-four is, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Next, we have an action plan for minority and women business enterprises?
Yes, so with the CDVG program, we consult with a lot of private vendors for purchase of goods and services. When the county does that, the county needs to be taking affirmative steps to encourage participation for minority and women business enterprises, and same as contractors that the county enters into agreements. Those contractors also have to be making those good faith efforts. So the county is to have an action plan on file to guide those actions that need to be taken, the paperwork associated with it, et cetera. Again, CDCOG facilitates those things on the county's behalf.
Okay, and this will be adopted as of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to adopt the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Action Plan?
So move.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. And we have another action plan, section four, section three?
Yes, thank you. So, um, session three is a specific HUD-related program. It's applicable for your CDVG home program, any other sort of HUD-funded programs as well. And so there was, this section three dates back about fifty years now, but about two or three years ago, the federal government completely overhauled the section three program. And so within the past two or three years, there's really been an emphasis on construction contractors working on projects where the projects are happening, that they're encouraging low and moderate income workers to be the employees doing the work on the projects. So this section three action plan is policies and procedures as far as, again, how the county goes about monitoring, are the contractors that are going to work on these projects, are they making a good faith effort to encourage low and moderate income employment opportunities for construction projects? So there's some numerical goals that, and again, they're goals, they're not quotas that the contractors are obligated to try and meet. If the contractors are not able to meet those goals, which we see a lot, there's what are called in the, the plan, quantitative actions that the contractors have to take to try and encourage employment opportunities for low and moderate income folks. And again, this plan has the associated paperwork that the contractors are obligated to comply with on the projects.
And are, is CDCOG Midland County's section three coordinator?
Yes, that's how we have been there, yeah.
Any discussion on that?
Is that a problem with some of the smaller contractors?
Candidly, it's a problem with all contractors. But it's our requirement that we're obligated to follow, and if the contractors can't meet the quantitative goals, which we see pretty much always, they have to meet the qualitative goals.
And this is part of the adopted specifications for projects?
Exactly, yep.
Anything else on that? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Good, we have section three action plan. And lastly, I think we have a procurement policy.
Yeah, that's enough for today. So the, the CDVG program requires that the county have a procurement policy, really to try and keep it as simple as possible, we have it written. So it essentially boils down to the county's going to comply with county code, or in the case of if it's a municipality doing the project, the municipality's going to comply with the local municipal code. If that's the more stringent requirements on the project, we also have to be concerned with federal procurement requirements under two CFR two hundred, and in the instances where that is the more stringent requirements we have to follow, then that's what the project's going to follow. So that's essentially what the policy says. The, the county and municipal procurement thresholds update annually, so we'll be back in a couple of months to have an updated plan for you then. Then, one of the other big ongoing discussion points that's been with DCD going back a number of years is Co-Stars. And so that's, they've really kind of waffled back and forth on that. The most recent DCD directive as far as use of Co-Stars for the CDVG programs concerned is that if there's, when we get to a project that wants to use Co-Stars, if we have municipal solicitor concurrence, and we've done, going back to the MBWB, we've done that, acquired solicitation, DCD will accept it. And in two CFR two hundred, there's some language about strategic sourcing programs, which is exactly what Co-Stars is. The federal regs are pretty clear that strategic sourcing programs are allowed for use. So we have some language in that procurement policy that specifically speaks to that and highlights that specific regulatory language.
And this is specific to the CDVG program?
CDVG in whole.
In whole. Okay, it's not a county-wide procurement policy?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so questions on that? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Do you have anything else?
No, we'll save it for next time.
I'm all forward to it, but that's?
Yeah, yeah, I know, everybody always does.
We'll adjourn the public meeting and reconvene the county public meeting. And we have a resolution, oh, we've done that, right? Oh, no. Okay. Oh, thank you. Yeah, and Jamie's just finding a bit to come up and talk to.
You're sorry, I can't sit still that long, apparently.
It's an application for Raz and Bojo grant of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
That's correct. So this is our, I want to say annual, it's our biannual, or number two-year grant, although this year it's only going to be for one year, for the seventy-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And this project is just a continuation of our procedural services that we provide in the Midland County Community Services Office for adult and juvenile offenders. Do you have any questions?
For the benefit of the vote, can you say what Raz and Bojo stands?
Yes, Raz and Bojo, Raza is the adult version, and Bojo is the juvenile services for?
So these are our crime victim services that your office provides?
For adult and juvenile victims.
Anything else for Jamie? Not, someone moved the motion.
So move.
Second.
A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the reappointment of Troy Borin from Bellville to the airport authority for a five-year term. This term expires at the end of twenty twenty-four. The motion to reappoint.
So move. So move that.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have the reappointment of Alana Hardon to the CDFOG Foundation Board of Trustees and revolving loan committee for a three-year term. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Purchase of services agreement if needed by children and youth, there are two agreements to call.
The first one is for Center County Children's Advocacy Center in Bellefontaine. They provide forensic interviews on an as-needed basis, and the rate is four hundred and fifty dollars per interview. And then the other one is for George Junior Republic in Grove City, Pennsylvania. They provide dependent and delinquent kids with access to behavioral health through residential services, drug and alcohol services, diagnostic and secure services.
Okay, I think that's pretty clear, the discussion, questions? Aye, motion to approve the two agreements.
Motion.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Next, we have intermediate punishment grant program contracts from July to June twenty twenty-five, Chief Probation Officer Nick.
Yes, this is our contracts with all of our treatment providers, the county here for our CIP grant. This is to provide treatment and evidence-based practices, best served lives in the program. This program is very treatment-oriented, so this is just locking in our contracts with all our providers.
And is there a grant covering this, these contracts?
Yes, this is from our county intermediate punishment grant.
Okay. There are a lot of it, a lot of the alignments are similar, I don't know if they're exact. So how do you choose?
It goes off the needs of each provider. We meet with them and look at their needs, providing for the services in the population of our intermediate punishment program, and they kind of tell us what they need to help best serve that population.
For things like the anger management therapy workbooks, they, is there a library for those, or do they return those?
No, they, they keep the materials.
They keep those?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the Chief Probation Officer? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Personnel items, the hiring of Sheriff Ohio for a part-time sheriff deputy, that's effective September twenty-third, and we have the hiring of Richard Kelly, Jr., for part-time corrections officer, effective September twenty-third. Is there a motion to approve these personnel items?
Motion.
Second. A vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Origin is complete, meeting is adjourned.